The meeting is called to order. We have an electronic participation by a school board member, so is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. DePaul and Mr. Connor. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilleyo?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
And Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. Andrews? All right, now, next one is Pledge of Allegiance. The day?
This rise for the flag? Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one is approval of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Preston, Dr. Day. Madam Clerk, would you please, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilleyo?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
I'm not sure he's connected yet.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is the chair comment. I just wanted the public to understand this board has voted on rebuilding Sandusky. That was the board's decision, and we communicated that decision to the City Hall, and the letter was signed by me and Dr. Day and with sense. So I'll have the board clerk hand out, you have, did you make copies of that letter?
Yes, sir.
You'll hand out the copies to the public as well as the board members. And Dr. Day, would you yield the time if you could explain, finally explain the timeline, how the process has worked out over the last year and a half or two years?
All right, so this is just a synopsis of our facilities planning over the last couple of years. When I joined the board in 2021, Dominion Seven was just completing a careful inspection and review of all our school buildings. They held at least three community engagement sessions to discuss the results. Following that, the firm MGT was engaged to make some recommendations about how we should proceed, and they too held numerous interviews and open sessions to get input from stakeholders. They produced four scenarios for our consideration, each with several options within them, and the understanding that we might ultimately develop a plan of our own. Both Dominion Seven and MGT emphasized that that the number of schools we are operating is not sustainable under the projections of declining enrollment. On September 5th, 2023, the Facilities and Finance Committee recommended to the board closing TC Miller and Darrington and requesting 15 million to increase capacity at, at our Ambass. This was based on a simple calculation, looking at the maintenance cost per student at all the different elementary schools in our district. But the board did not take action on that recommendation. At the next meeting on September 19th, the board adopted that plan, but with the change, instead of closing Darrington, to close Sandusky. So again, on September 19th, the board formally adopted the plan to close TC Miller, Sandusky, and to request 15 million in funding to expand capacity at Bass. This passed on a five to four vote. The city was informed that this was our formally adopted plan with a letter similar to the one that has been distributed here. We then began work with MGT to work out new attendance zones to go with that plan, which is a long and involved process. We also had a PPEA in hand to do the renovation of Bass, which included prices which were shared in closed session with the Facilities and Finance Committee, but is proprietary information, so it can't be opened publicly. Based on the understanding that the city was not supportive of that plan, we did not push the PPA forward to City Council. And then on July 23rd, again with the understanding that the city was not supportive of our plan to expand Bass, the vote boarded, the board voted seven to two this time to rescind that plan and instead decided to rebuild Sandusky. The city was formally informed of that decision by the board, and that formal information is what this letter is. That remains the current position of the board.
Thank you, Dr. Day. The next one is Student Representative, Dr. Copeland.
Glass, when first last time, will let Heritage go. Please introduce yourself. You're not Miss Hester.
I'm not Miss Hester. My name's Matthew Garland. I'm fourth here at Heritage.
Take it away.
All right. First topic, our pioneer in action. Our leadership class got the opportunity to hand over a $7,108 check. They raised it for our food bank at Blue Ridge Food Bank. It was pretty nice. Next up, pioneer outside the classroom. Our ROTC team got to compete in their very own big orange classic. They did end up winning a bronze medal, and we are very proud of them. Next up, pioneer making minutes matter. We're, we're now holding a attendance award, and Natalie Abar won this time. It's a $50 grand prize we host quarterly. It's, anyone who has perfect attendance has a chance to win every single quarter. Next up, sports. Our football team ended the season with a nine-three record. Aiden Slash helping a whole lot in that. And that's about it on the sports aspect. And all fall sports have officially ended, and now we're on to our winter sports as basketball, indoor track and field, swimming, and wrestling. Oh, yeah. And Pioneer Theater. Our opening night for Pioneer Thinner Theater for the winner, Our Adams Family, February 21st is coming out, so anyone who wants to come, help support. And for our Pioneer Scholarships, Alex Stickel is the winner of our Voice of Freedom Scholarship for our veterans and foreign wars. He'll be advancing to the regional round of the scholarship competition. We appreciate all the hard work for our art teachers do to grow our HHS art program. They're such great teachers who meet every student every day and just put a lot of effort into our students to help them grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's going on at EC Glass?
Um, so first of all, hope everyone had a great Thanksgiving break and a very happy Thanksgiving. We're kind of moving into the holiday season now. Unfortunately, Glass is also in that kind of little awkward period right before winter sports start, but fall sports have already ended, so there's really nothing going on right now. But I do have updates, so I know I talked a little bit about how last time our Hilltopper volleyball team had advanced to states, and they played really, a really hard fought game against Loudoun County and unfortunately lost in four sets. But we're really proud of our state runner-up volleyball team and the amazing season that they pulled off this year. And in winter sport news, JV and varsity basketball have a game tonight, actually, a little bit later tonight in the McHugh Gym at EC Glass, and their first game of the season, so good luck to those guys. The show Peter Pan and Wendy is coming to EC, the EC Glass stage soon, so make sure you get your tickets on ecgtbooktix.com. It's a modern spin on the traditional story of Peter Pan, and it can be, it would be a really fun night, so just, you know, bring your family and enjoy it. It's supposed to be really good. Last month, in November, Glass and Heritage sent students to play in the South Central Senior Regionals Honors Orchestra in Charlottesville, Virginia, and we had four talented students go. It was Isaac Harden, Thomas Lamb, Trenton Walker, and Alton Quinn, and they were all recognized as being among the top high school musicians in central Virginia. So that's a really big deal. This November, College Board recognized EC Glass on the Advanced Placement Scholar Honor Roll in 2024, so that's the second year in a row for us. Schools can earn this by maximizing college readiness for their students and giving students opportunity, opportunities to get college credit. And we have a lot of students working really hard in all of their AP classes, so it's well deserved, for sure. A Teacher Cafe is going to be coming soon to Glass courtesy of the Culinary Arts Classes. The Teacher Cafe is just going to be a teacher-exclusive little spot with coffee, baked goods, and snacks, all homemade by the EC Glass culinary students, just as a little pick-me-up for some of the teachers. It's a really cute idea. I'm excited that we're doing that.
That's very good.
And then, starting on December 5th, there's going to be meetings, mostly for sophomores, about all of the special programs that their school system has to offer as opposed to going to Glass full-time. So that being Central Virginia Governor's School, Early College with CBCC, and STEM Academy, and these are all great options. And students are getting the opportunity to learn about them from people who are actually going there, because each day we're going to have a representative from one of these places come and talk to the sophomores, so just to inform everyone that's interested. But that is it, and I hope everyone has a happy holidays and a happy new year. I'll see you guys next month.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next one is public comments. Dr. Day?
Persons appearing before the school board will not be allowed to campaign for public office or promote private business ventures, and should not use profanity or vulgar language or gestures, make comments about a public official or an employee that are not related to the public official or employee's official duties, engage in behavior that disrupts the meeting or intimidates others, or address the school board on issues that do not concern the services, policies, role, and/or responsibilities of the school board. Individual speakers shall limit their comments to three minutes. A speaker representing a group shall limit their comments to five minutes. The representatives shall identify the group at the beginning of their presentation. A group may have no more than one spokesperson. The total allotted time for public comments at school board meetings is 30 minutes. Voicemail messages to be played are also limited to three minutes for individuals and five minutes for speakers representing a group. Priority will be given to in-person comments before voice-vaile messages in the following order: first students, second staff, third parents or guardians, and fourth, community members. Public comments are reserved for the public to provide input. The board does not respond to comments, answer questions, or otherwise engage in discussion at this time. We have just one individual signed up to make a public comment this morning or this afternoon, this evening, and that's Mr. Phil Stump.
Good evening. My name is Phil Stump. I am a proud parent of three children who had wonderful education in the LCS. At the October meeting, I spoke to you in opposition to the board's decision to eliminate the Equity Task Force. This decision was, was apparently made based on discussions in which there was no public scrutiny and was probably illegal because it changed the existing policies of LCS without any public discussion. So what I would like to address today is the lack of transparency in board decisions. These begin with the July 9th meeting, in which four new policies were introduced. These policies were not formally presented to the board. Even new board members had not seen them, and they were not available later, and they were only available later to the public in the board minutes. The board seemed to be acting to implement Governor Yonkin's policies. They spoke of waiting for the latest executive order from Governor Yonkin before taking certain actions. Why should LCS policies be driven by a one-term governor? Do what is best for the students. The major policy change that they believed necessary to implement immediately was a cellphone policy, and at first they wanted an absolute prohibition of cellphone use in the schools. At this, at this meeting and then on October 6th meeting, Superintendent Edwards told them that it was unrealistic to implement this policy immediately. School Board Member DePaul insisted on doing so and threatened to micromanage Dr. Edwards to make sure she implemented the policy the way he wanted. It was not long after this, on September 9th, that Dr. Edwards resigned, effective at the end of the school year, in order to facilitate a transition to a new superintendent. Was it because she realized that her voice of reason and experience would not prevail in the board as now constituted? Did the board then, behind closed doors, induce her to leave the next month, creating a chaotic situation? There was a special called Board Meeting on October 3rd. It was not open to the public, and nothing was listed on the agenda. On October 7th, the first meeting of an ad hoc superintendent search committee was held. There was no agenda, and it was not open to the public. There was no transparency about how the ad hoc committee had been constituted. Further similar meetings were held on October 28th, November 6th, and November 25th, all closed to the public. There is very little transparency in the recent actions of the school board. You are seriously out of touch with the people you supposedly represent. The newest board members were appointed by a city council dominated by persons with close ties to Liberty University, a private institution with a Christian nationalist agenda. The council invited the current school board chair, Atul Gupta, to serve an additional three-year term after refusing to let Dr. Brennan do so the preceding year. Atul Gupta has contributed more than $40,000 to recent city council campaigns in his own name and through his business since 2022, according to campaign finance records compiled by the Virginia Public Access Project. The three council members to whose campaigns he contributed are all Republicans with close ties to Liberty University. To return to the cellphone policy, if you wish to implement a cellphone, cellphone policy that is realistic, I suggest that you work with those affected by that policy, the students, teachers, and parents. Start with the students. Don't just give the appearance of consulting them. Involve them in the decision-making process. You will find that they are much better informed and more reasonable than you are and would help you to make, to adopt a more reasonable policy. Having bought into it, they could actually help you implement it. This would be a much better way also of handling the discipline problems, so-called discipline problems. It is the way of circles used in restorative justice and is much preferable to the use of suspensions and expulsions which disproportionately affect students of color and contribute to the school-to-prison pipeline. These students of color now make up more than 60% of LCS students. Virginia Organizing has worked for years to encourage the establishment of restorative justice in LCS, and thanks to the current out-of-touch board, this goal now seems farther away than ever. Thank you.
Do we have any voicemail messages?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, that concludes.
No emails.
Or emails? No emails either. That concludes the public comment.
Thank you, Dr. Day. Next one is consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Dr. Tensley? Mr. Connor? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilleyo?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Laurie?
Yes.
Dr. Tensley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is policy, sorry, finance report, Dr. Copeland.
Ms. James.
Good evening, Chairman Gupta, members of the board, and Dr. Copeland. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I will be briefing my remarks this evening, so you can get them and eat some of those Thanksgiving leftovers. You have before you the October 31st, 2024, month in financials. As of October, which marks 33.3% of the fiscal year already passing, it's flying by. The percent of revenues collected versus the original appropriation is at 19.07% year-to-date. The amount of expenditures versus original appropriation is at 27.15%, and expenditures inclusive of encumbrances equates to 74.64%. So notable variances in expenditures. As a general rule of thumb, technology items are usually front-loaded expenditures in a fiscal year, as evidenced by our variances in this report this evening. Line item 85, function 8100, technology, classroom, instruction, other, has used 148.16% of the budgeted, and that's due to expenses related to iXL Learning and textbook software. It has currently exceeded the budget because we are waiting for approval to roll over a purchase order to cover the cost. That was the line item that we requested that City Council release textbook reserve funds to cover this textbook software, and so we are waiting for the finalization and the approval on that to roll over those POs to cover that cost and be able to do a budget amendment to catch up with the already invoiced item. That invoice didn't come in until October, so that is why it was paid late. Line item 90, function 8300, has used 121.17% of the budget due to expenses and encumbrances related to new school year technology needs. This includes purchase of laptops, frontline technologies, things of that nature. And so I anticipate that that 121%, as the fiscal year catches up to it, will equalize out to 100% of the budget. Line item 92, function 8500, which is technology and pupil transportation, other, has used 100% of the budgeted due to Where's the Bus Software, which is used for bus operations, which obviously you have to buy early on in the school year to, to cover those services. And line item 94, function 8600, which is also technology, operations, and maintenance, has used 100% of the budget due to expenses related to Operations Hero and Raptor Technologies, two other school-related software programs. Moving on to the statement of revenue, the majority, there aren't any notable variances. The majority of the revenue lines are right on target for collection receipts in comparison to this time last year as represented by the 33%, 33.3% received to date. On those line items that you see on the report before you, the majority have collected spot-on the percentage that this fiscal year has passed. Monthly BOE report, at this time, the, the report was due, at the time the report was due, the October premiums hadn't been reported yet, so I hadn't received that information. So you have before you the September expenditures and receipts for health premiums, healthcare for our, for our employees and staff. And as a reminder, the health insurance beginning balance, that's not going to be available until after the FY '24 audit is finalized. So I will not know how far of a deficit we have in healthcare until I get those finalized numbers from the FY '20, '24 audit finalization. So I have a couple of other informational items. In accordance with the FY '26 budget calendar, an agenda item has been added to the December 17th school board meeting to hold the first public hearing to seek input from the community on the budget. So this is the opportunity for you to listen to your constituents and the community on what they think the needs are for the school system. This isn't necessarily you making decisions on a request or proposal. This is for you, gives you the opportunity to hear how everyone in the community, what the needs that they think that we actually are facing. And the other informational item that I have is Brown Edwards, which is our auditors of records, will be in attendance at that December 17th school board meeting to present a brief presentation on the FY '20, '24 audit. So I will entertain any questions that you have at this time.
Questions for Ms. James? I have few.
What was the date on the public comment?
I'm sorry?
What was the date for the meeting?
The public hearing is December the 17th.
Okay, it's the same date, okay.
Yes, sir. I'm gonna, we had them both at the same time.
James, have you shared the audit, preliminary audit report with the Finance and Facilities Committee?
So we have not, we have not received the finalized document yet. We are doing some management responses to some of the items, and so as soon as those are complete, it will be presented to the City of Lynchburg, City Council first, and then we will be able to share that with the Facilities and Finance Committee and then share it with the school board as well.
Because when it's shared with the city, it's shared on behalf of the school board, right? Is that the assumption correct? So the, the, the board, or especially the chair of the finance, should have been the loop at that point? Because it's in the public domain, we are presenting the audit report for the school district, which is managed by this board.
Yes, sir. As soon as.
I would imagine that, yes.
That's the correct protocol should be?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, sir. As soon as the city makes the document available to us, we will make sure that the Facilities and Finance Committee gets it.
Then my other question was, you know, you've got $53,000 in deficit for health insurance. You've got a million dollars in health reserve.
Yes, sir.
Knowing the policies, the premiums will change. Knowing the policies, the premiums will change effective January first.
Yes, sir.
Have you presented a plan or is there a plan in discussion what to do with the leftover contingency reserve? I'm looking at Mr. Connor. You know, those things we could do, because this board has been tirelessly working to make sure that our hourly employees are taken care of, right? Last year, this board wanted seventeen dollars minimum and a fifty thousand dollar minimum teacher salary.
Yes.
And school by school, every time I visit, the hourly employees are hurting because of the high inflation rate. So my humble request will be when the budget is presented, we should keep them in mind. That's not a request, it's just, you know, carryover for the last two years. This board has been trying to do. Mr. Andrews, you are there, you have been a vocal supporter, you are online today, sir. Would you like to say something, because Mr. Andrews has been the champion for that, for God knows for, as long as you have been on school board?
Yeah, I think you and I have been doing it together, man. I mean, I just, we are both passionate about making sure that workers have the, the pay that they need, a livable wage, right? And so we don't want them to be working two and three jobs to make ends meet to support their family. So anything we can do to increase that pay, you know, it definitely increases our budget for sure. That's, that's definitely something that we need to be taking into consideration, of course. But anytime, man, we can make sure that people are, have a livable wage, they have the good, good healthcare, they can take care of their family. I'm all about that, man, so.
It's not about politics, it's about the human. And I see, I was at Thanksgiving lunch distribution, many of them working two, three jobs. And as part of our family, we got to relieve their burden this year. So maybe we'll make a commitment that we gotta do something, and if need be, we ask more money from the city.
Yes, sir. Any savings that we get from, fingers crossed, the premium increase will be reinvested into our staff.
And how many unfilled positions do we have? Do you have a number? I'm throwing these random questions at you, I wish I had...
I, I don't have a...
I'm not going to venture a guess.
Yeah, I don't have a, a read on that, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next one is policy review, consideration of policy. First one is Dr. Day for cellphone.
Okay, so we're talking about the policy JFCZ, which the title of it is Personal Communication Devices. The board looked at this at our November twelfth meeting regarding the need to make some changes to bring our policy into compliance with the state's mandated guidelines. And the way we left it at that meeting is that Attorney Towns and I would try to work out the language of a revised policy to reflect the things that we discussed about. And we've done that, and there's a link to the revised version in the agenda. I just thought I'd go through and tell you what the specific changes are. Originally, the policy referred to the regular school day, but the state guidelines use the language bell to bell. And so we changed the wording so that it uses the language in the state guidelines, bell to bell. And also, in the definition of personal communication devices, we added explicit statement that that is to include cellphones, in case there was any ambiguity about that. The paragraphs for elementary, middle, and high school students, there used to be, in the policy that currently exists, there's a separate paragraph for each of those. But in the changes we have made, result in the fact that all, the policies for all three types of schools are identical, with one exception that I'll mention in a minute. So what we've done is combine, instead of three separate policy paragraphs, we've made one paragraph that applies to all three types of schools. And then we added a separate paragraph stating that elementary school students may not use their devices on school buses unless the driver gives permission. Now, the board expressed favor for this position at our discussion on November twelfth, based on the understanding that the state guidelines mandate it. But in fact, the state guidelines do not mandate it. What the guidelines actually say in several places is, quote, "That school divisions must make policies that determine cellphone and personal electronic communication device use on school buses where elementary students are present," end quote. In other words, we're just told that we have to have a policy, it doesn't say what the policy must be. So we have put the, the policy that the board seemed to approve in, it simply says that elementary students may not use personal communication devices on buses unless approved by the driver. We put that, unless approved by the driver. For instance, there's a mechanical breakdown in the bus, and the children are worried that their parents are going to be upset if the bus doesn't arrive on time. Circumstances like that, we felt the bus driver ought to authorize them to be able to call their parents and say, Mom, the bus is going to be fifteen minutes late. So that's why we put that in. And then a statement is added to, at the, near the end, to the effect that students must abide by the policies at a different school they may be present at for a field trip, for instance. And that additional restrictions that a principal may impose must comply with state guidelines. So those, that is my summary of the actual changes that Hope and I put in. There is one thing that did not get into the draft version that, if you're looking at it, that you see before you on board docs, and that's that there's a sentence at the end, you find it here, yeah, yeah, so this sentence is in the policy. It says, "Principal may authorize individual exceptions to the policy based on documented medical needs of a student or while a student is present in the school office." The state guidelines do say that we're supposed to also say such exceptions shall be written into the student's 504, IED, or individual healthcare plan. We have not put that in the draft statement, and I see that Hope is here. I don't know, Hope, is that an omission on our part, or did we have a reason that we didn't put that in?
Attorney Towns?
Yes, that may have been, it's one of those where if the board feels it's appropriate, I think that it can be added. I think when we discussed it, we talked about how the principal can go back and include things that are included in the guidelines, because we don't outline every point that's in the guidelines. Because this would be four or five pages. So I think that the, the language that you mentioned, if you'd like to make that amendment to add that, I think that that would be fine. In the, our iterations that we went through, I did have it taken out. But if you feel that it's appropriate to add, I think that that, that would be a further clarifying point that could assist families just to make sure that they have the appropriate information if their child needs to use a cellphone.
So now that you remind me, I, I do recall that what we said was that because of the sentence that the principal's authorization must be in accordance with the state guidelines, and those things about IEP, 504, whatever it is, are in the state guidelines, we didn't need to say it again explicitly here. So I am not proposing that we add that, I'm just pointing out, pointing that out. So that is my summary of the changes to our current policy that we have put into the draft, and so the recommendation to the board is...
Attorney Town, do you have any other words of wisdom for us to consider?
No, no, Dr. Gupta, I think that, you know, as far as the, the school bus issue, you know, after going, going to the discussion and some of the points particularly made by Mr. Connor, thought that perhaps adding that language that the school bus driver can allow the children to use phones would clarify that point. And while it's not mandated, the elementary school students do not use a phone, it sounded appropriate, and that's something that Dr. Day and I want to make sure that if you all were interested in the board, to have that language in there, that's something you all could consider.
So we already have a cellphone policy in place, but we are modifying it based on the new state guidelines, right?
That's right. We have a policy in place that we made, we put it in place the same day that the state came out with its guidelines. And we are making adjustments to it to put it in compliance with the state's guidelines.
And I'll actually add one more point, excuse me, but also to clarify that one of the things that Dr. Day and I, going back over the definition to make it very clear that the phone is not to be on the student's person. So when the phone is stored, it, it should not be stored in a, in a pants pocket or a coat pocket that's on the child, wouldn't be appropriate. So hopefully, that clarification will address some of the concerns that some of the other board members had about the students and cellphones and still maybe having them on their person.
Yeah, the sentence in question reads, "A student's device must be turned off, not just silenced, and outside." In other words, in a bookbag or locker, not on the student's person. So what is the board's pleasure? Do you want to approve these changes?
Are you making a motion to?
I approve that we accept the, the drafted revision to policy JFCZ.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor, but Dr. Day second by Mr. DePaul, discussion on this amended cellphone policy.
I think not having them on their person at all would help a lot, because, yeah.
A, a point of clarification, that if this gets approved, it's effective in twenty twenty-five, it's not immediately, or is it immediate?
My understanding is when we approve a policy, unless we specify a later effective date, it would be effective immediately.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify.
Let me, one more thing, there's no wiggle room in the policies approved by the board. Each principal is required to enforce those policies in, as is being written in the policy. Am I correct in my assumption, or am I too far out?
Nope.
So, and the implementation of policy needs to be consistent across the district. It cannot be one at one place and the other at other place, it sends a wrong message. So that, that has to be the principle from here on, that the implementation of policies will be consistent. Dr. Brown is walking up, you got something to add to, sir?
If it's appropriate, yes, sir. Good evening, members of the board. Just humbly and respectfully, I always like to think about implementation, and it does take some time to, to get with our principals. One of the things Dr. Copeland has looked into with us as well, to be proactive and get ahead of this, is purchase of some yonder pouches as a pilot program for students who are repeat offenders. We can't get them for all of our students because of the cost associated, it's a six-figure cost. But we would like some time to be able to do that. I think a clean break after we get back from winter break would be really helpful and would help us make sure that we're enforcing the policy, not just principals and administrators, but it's also teachers. They're going to be the main ones enforcing the policy. And one of the things, when I was a principal, off your person meant was, like, if I could see an imprint of cellphone in your pocket. So we just need some clarification on all those types of things and the exact start date, but that's just my only thing.
So you're requesting that we do specify an effective date of, what, January one?
We came back from break, that would be really helpful.
Christmas break is over.
Yeah.
Point, I disagree with that. I believe it should be immediate. They have had ample time since the original to implement the more lenient cellphone restriction. And I've been at the schools, Ms. Lowry's been at the schools, and we see kids in the hallway, walking past administrators, they haven't done anything yet. So bringing that to the attention, to the point of January first, makes no sense. It should be immediate, and we should be cracking down on this now.
Yeah, so the, the policy that's in place now was adopted September third. The primary difference in what the change here is that high school students are no longer allowed to use them during their lunch break.
I've seen it in the hallways.
No, it's just that, I think I'm reinforcing what you're saying. The bulk of this policy has been in place Sept-, since September third, yeah.
It's just not being followed.
Mm-hmm. Anywhere.
We have the same goal, like, our goal is to enforce the policy, we just want to make sure we're doing it as effective as possible. And we have, we've been working to make sure that we're disciplining students and holding them accountable. And it has been challenging with the more lenient policies. So if we, my opinion, respectfully, if we start tomorrow without being able to communicate effectively with parents and not being able to give our teachers a heads-up and making sure that our administrators are properly trained, it may make it more difficult to do this. And given that break is a week, two and a half weeks away, that would be helpful for us to be able to push that, that out proactively, get the yonder pouches in, have some of the equipment that we need to make sure that we're at, at...
Well, how, how would the yonder pouches be used in conjunction with this policy?
So we've met with Dr. Rule and Mr. Beatty at the high schools. The yonder pouches, for those who don't know, they're a cloth pouch with a magnetic mechanism. Once your cellphone's in it, it requires another device to unlock it. We've been using it successfully at our suspension centers over last year, they work great. But if a student is a repeat offender, in addition to suspensions and the other suspension center trips that they would have to go through in programs, they would also be required to put their device in that pouch so they wouldn't have access to it at all.
So their device would be in the pouch as well as being not on their person?
Yes, sir.
Point of clarification, I thought that they weren't even allowed to have them in the restorative portions. I thought that they weren't even allowed to have them on-site.
As soon as they walk in, they go on the yonder pouches, and they're not able to access them throughout the day.
Currently? Or that's the plan?
That's what we've been doing throughout this last year.
Okay, how could they have, be, how could you have repeat offenders in restorative academy then?
No, that's just our practice, it's a cellphone-free environment at the restorative academy. We've done that since last year before all the guidance was out there. That's just something that we know we needed, because we needed students to be able to be reflective.
Okay, I misunderstood, and I thought you was, you were talking about the restorative academy and that there were repeat offenders there. I apologize.
That's, that's okay.
I have a question. If we move the date to January first, what's going to be done, though, because they're not following the policy as it is now, what's going to be done to get them to follow the policy now?
What, we will have the opportunity to be able to communicate with parents and make sure that they are aware that this is the policy changes, communicate that through our communications team, emails, messages home.
How about reinforcement to the fact that your children are not following it now? Like, for example, I was at last yesterday, I, this was in the hallway, and they were changing classes, and I counted forty-four phones out. That was just one hallway.
Yes, ma'am. One of the things we've been trying, it's, it's a challenge.
Yeah. And they know they're not supposed to have it.
I've said this before, and I don't think it's under, overstating it, it's addiction for some kids, like, something that they feel like they have to have. So to just say that you're not allowed to have it, they'll find ways around it, and enforcement is crucial. One of the things I've talked with the high school principals about is ensuring that we're enforcing the policy. So they've actually been working on audits, cellphone audits, and walks through certain, certain parts of the school and certain classrooms to check and see how many times our students are actually following the policy, not following the policy, and increasing enforcement of that. So we're working through that, and it's not that we're not trying to do anything, but it's a big problem, not just here in Lynchburg, across the nation. We just need the additional time to be intentional about how, I just don't understand, I don't know how we would tomorrow, we have the policy, but no one would know about it, and then we would be expected to implement that and held accountable for that.
Dr. Brown, what I'm hearing you is you're assuring this board that if you move the implementation to January first, enforcement will be hundred percent, and there'll be no wiggle room from there on. That's, I'm correctly hearing from you? It'll give you enough time to make sure that, with Ms. Lowry's pointing out, those non-enforcements in hallways will be taken care of after they come back from Christmas break.
Only thing that my father told me to be a hundred percent certain is that I'll pay taxes and I'll die. But you have my assurance that we are going to take it seriously, and we will do everything humanly possible to ensure that we're enforcing the policies as we do.
My impression is that it'll be better in January than it would be tomorrow. But it won't be perfect or close to perfect unless there was a six-figure investment in those pouches for everyone at LCS, correct? That would increase that percentage.
That's what some divisions have moved to, yeah.
I would support a delay to January one if it was coupled with a reporting and verification program of some kind to ensure that something is really taking place, that we got a report from principals showing us exactly how they communicated with the parents and the students to encourage them. to encourage them, to allow monitors in the school, whether it's us or someone else, to go in unannounced and count phones. If the principals would agree to that, then I will support a delay till January 1st.
We'd more than happy to come back before the board and provide a full implementation report and provide updates throughout the year on our walks and our audits and see what we're seeing. Happy to do that if we're allowed the time to be strategic and intentional about implementing it.
Mr. Brown, do we have incident reports of those things being collected?
We do keep records and track of how many students are.
Can we have that regularly shared with the board?
And share names.
Correct. The number of incidences and which school?
We're happy to put that together.
Okay.
I don't have that prepared.
We've already provided an acclamation time. We've already provided the opportunity for this to be implemented, and it hasn't been successful. Putting it in tomorrow and being more strict with implementation is going to be a better situation than delaying it for people to acclimate. They know it's not supposed to be out there. They know it's not supposed to be any time outside of lunch currently. They know this, and it's allowed to happen.
Today is December 3rd, and the school closes for Christmas break on December 22nd?
20th.
20th. So it's 17 days more, and when they come back, this policy will be enforced, right?
And if I'm not mistaken, someone, feel free to correct me, often wrong, never in doubt, but the governor's policy does take effect, and the governor's order takes effect January 1, and is not in effect now.
That's the deadline by which our policy has to.
So that gives us a little bit more legroom as far as when we get pushed back from parents in the community.
So in your response to Mr. DePaul's statement, I understand your point of view. I feel like what we're offering, what we're getting by agreeing to a delay till January 1 is a promise that we're going to get some reporting and verification of this, which we don't have now.
I think the data should be shared by the chair of the discipline committee on a regular basis, right? Is my assumption correct?
It is being shared, and even the reporting is flawed. I've counted more incidents when I, she just counted 44. I counted more incidents from Glass, the times that I've visited, as opposed to the reports that we've received.
And I think the incidences that you're viewing aren't ones that teachers have written up. When teachers are writing a referral, and I would argue, it's not necessarily flawed. It may not be as accurate as a depiction of how many students are using it. As far as the numbers that are being reported, that referrals are written for, those are accurate.
I'm saying it's being ignored.
I understand, sir.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Do we have cameras in the hallways?
We do.
So during school breaks, I mean, classroom breaks, anybody could be in the office looking to see if people are on their phones.
A building like Harridge High School has over 100 cameras in it.
It's impossible to enforce via video.
Okay, gotcha.
Speaking of the investment, like, in the yonder pouches, has our ID department been insulted on the possible cellphone jammer in the schools, which might be?
More effective.
More effective, that if they pull it out and it doesn't work?
So if we're jamming cellphone signals in a building when we have an actual crisis, the systems that we use to notify people would be impacted by that also.
Thank you. I've been told that it's illegal as well, because it's denial of service to everyone. It's not specific to individuals.
So I do want to share one thing with the board. Even with a policy and rigorous enforcement, there are no guarantees that you will not walk in a building and see a student using a cellphone. So let's go into this thing eyes wide open, that we want everybody to be better with this, with a clearer, more definitive policy, so that we can get students focused on what the needs within the school are, not what's going on on their phone. Likewise, we don't want our teachers to be hyper-focused on cellphone enforcement when they should be focused on instruction and academics.
Okay, I can think of a couple of things that may help this, because we don't want to penalize employees, we don't want to penalize the administration of the schools, because there's so few compared to the number of students that would make this infraction. So we want to be effective in our aid to implementation of this policy that we are establishing. And this means that we have to do things a little bit more, not harshly, but more seriously. I think that we can, aside from what they do with speed cameras, which is send you your picture in the mail with a little debt if you went the wrong way, or if you went past the thing, I think that we can actually have a number of statements to the students that say, "You are not able to participate in certain functions if you have been caught with a cellphone, such as sports, such as music, such as field trips." By the incident, because of the incident, and they can be proven, of course. So I think that will bring it more to the individual student. We're not punishing them with grades, we're not punishing them going to the restorative. The gentleman talked about the restorative justice, and it has been working with some things in your particular niche there at the alternative academy. But I think if we do this, and we can be serious about it, the students will take it to heart, because if they see students that are not able to go to the field trips, not able to participate in sports, because specifically, we are taking a serious stance on no cellphones for the sake of increasing the quality of the environment and grades, I think that they will come around if we take the opportunity. And the students are not able to get into the games, if they cannot get to the Friday night games because of the cellphone. Like, one incident per games, like, if they found with the game one, a cellphone one time, they can't go to one game. Twice, five games. If it happens three times, they're banned from the games for the entire semester or whatnot. It's, you know, it can be hashed out. But I think that is the quality of, I mean, the severity of the consequence for these infractions that has to be established in order to make implementation easier.
Dr. Tinsley?
So I mean, I'll start off by saying I do support this policy. I have supported the cellphone policy from the beginning. I support these amendments. Kind of echoing what Dr. Copeland said, though, a lot of things a teacher and staff member to school have to focus on in a day, and I would never expect the cellphone policy and enforcement thereof to be a top priority for our educators. So I agree with Dr. Copeland, you know, even with enforcement of this policy, you know, there probably going to be things that get through. I mean, even in the height of the war on drugs in America, right, people still use drugs. You can't stop it all, right? So that's number one. I think we got to be realistic. Number two is another perspective on realism, and that is, this is a cultural issue. Cellphone usage and over-usage and abuse and addiction, this is a cultural issue. We can't expect the schools or our teachers to solve a larger cultural issue that we need to deal with, frankly, at higher levels in our nation. And I'm not going to keep going on a soapbox here, but let's be realistic, too. We can't ask our teachers to police an issue that is much, much larger than them in our schools. So, that being said, I do agree with Dr. Day, though, that I would like to have, you know, I support, you know, one January implementation, but I would like to see some reporting back, and I would like to see our principals and administrators making a good faith effort to enforce this policy and hold our kids accountable. But I know it's going to take some time.
Dr. Day, you want to make a friendly amendment? I see your hand.
So I was going to make a motion.
One last thing. How many times will you put out there between Christmas break and January 1st to the families as a reminder? Like, will it just be a one-time thing, or will you do it twice at least, or?
We'll do it numerous times, because we will start from the division level, and then we will provide principals with reinforcing things that they can send all the way up to the day before the kids come back in January.
Okay, perfect.
Multiple aspects of communication.
Please do, because one of my arguments in previous session that we've had about some type of related subject is that school, large school organizations are notoriously bad at communication. And me being on the, a commission of the city trying to deal with youth, all these parents did not know of all the resources available to the students, whether public or private, because there's bad communication. And we wanted to share, that was one of our goals, was to share simple resource location for them to go to, and it was difficult.
Dr. Day?
So I'm going to move, make a motion with two parts. Part one, we adopt these, the draft policy that I've talked through. Part two, it becomes effective January 1, and we expect at our February 4th board meeting a full report on all implementation measures that have been made and success so far.
There's a motion on floor, there was a second to that motion.
What was the motion on the floor already?
To approve.
To accept the policy.
To accept the policy.
Oh, then I'm amending, I changed my motion to amend it by adding the second part.
So you're making a friendly amendment, and could you repeat for the clerk?
So the amendment is to, the amended, the amendment to the motion is to add to it the require, the specification that implementation will start January 1, and at our February 4th meeting, we will expect a full report on implementation measures and success.
Is there a second to that motion?
A second.
Can't report on what happens after the report.
Discussion, let's have a second, is there a second to the motion? Any discussion on the amended motion? Mr. Clerk, will you please call?
So we're voting on the amendment and the motion.
Yeah, January 1st.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
No.
Now the motion, the amended version of the motion is now the active motion on the floor.
Any discussion on the amended version of the motion?
Part A and part B, there are two parts.
I think there should be part C, which is something similar to what I said, as far as additional reporting after that report. So continual reporting, annual reporting, which simply means monthly, of incidents, numbers, and which location.
But I think they said that was to the discipline committee.
That's fine, give it to the discipline committee, and then you can report to us.
We're already getting reports to the discipline committee.
That's what we got. Okay, I don't get it.
Well, I guess.
And the second thing, the second thing would be communication of something that actually has some teeth, like stopping students who have infractions from going to games. We'd like that to be hashed out, and then.
Well, that's why I say full discussion of all implementation measures. That would include what you just discussed.
That's a good idea.
That's what I, that's part of my motion.
So the normal path is that multiple referrals for similar offenses lead to greater and greater punishment. It's not, we take away your rights to go to a basketball game, or a football game, or anything of that matter.
Tell me why it hasn't been working right now? Is it simply numbers?
Why, what hasn't been working, sir?
You have repeat offenses or infractions, and then you have numerous, numerous incidences of students using their phones in school.
I can't answer that question.
Okay, so that's probably why I suggested something different than what was, what's the norm.
So what you are, from my perspective, what you are recommending would require a complete update for the way we handle discipline, because it doesn't fit within our current discipline matrix, and it's, it's different.
Dr. Tinsley?
I would suggest we just maintain the current discipline, and just enforce this under the current disciplinary measures, because if we start creating new policies for this, new policies for that, we're going to create an administrative state equivalent to what we have at the national level. Right, so, I mean, we don't, I don't think that's what we want.
How would you check at games for whose?
Right, exactly. I mean, that's just.
It's a nightmare.
Enforce.
I would suggest.
Enforce what we already have on books.
I would suggest we adopt the motion that's on the floor, and if, after the reporting we get in February, we decide some additional things are appropriate, then we adopt another motion then. And let's not overly complicate things now.
Keep it simple.
Would you please call it over?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Gilliam?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Next thing is also consideration of policy, Mr. DePaul.
Yes.
That's G F. Thank you, Dr. Brown.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Brown. Yes, what we have is, oh, I went back to the old one.
J G D J.
There's just one change.
J D D slash J G E. With all the, what we've been looking at in the discipline appeals, discipline actions that have been leading up to escalated discipline issues, we found that cussing vulgar language has precipitated a lot of, a lot of these actions, a lot of our cases, a lot of the discipline issues. What we are proposing is that we are adding to the policy which provides for the recommendation, the consideration for expulsion or long-term suspension, include vulgar language. To get right to the point, in addition, these are the words that we are adding, "In addition, a student who directs language or a gesture that is vulgar, profane, obscene, or abusive to a teacher, staff member, or volunteer at any time during the school, during school or after-school hours, albeit on or off school property, the student shall be considered for expulsion in accordance with applicable laws." That's modification to this particular policy. I don't believe, and the board doesn't, or the committee doesn't believe, that any teacher should be exposed to such disrespect and threats in addition to having, in addition to any sort of physical assault and/or battery. The, we want this to be included, so that teachers do not have to be subject to such behavior.
Attorney Thomas, do you want to chime in, legal opinion on this, changes?
No, not everything today. Just as far as choosing the language, just reviewed the, the language in Virginia Department of Education disciplinary description, looked at Virginia criminal codes, just to make sure the language covered all the points that Mr. DePaul wanted to make sure this policy conveyed.
May I observe that the language says, "Shall be considered for expulsion."
That's right.
According to state law, we have to, in considering expulsion, there's, what, eight different aspects of the situation that by state law must be considered before ruling on expulsion is made. So this policy is written in compliance with state law. It doesn't mandate expulsion, it says the discipline committee will consider whether expulsion is appropriate or not.
Yes, and that's before the appeals committee. What this does is effectively unify and make consistent the way in which these behaviors are handled across the board, based on what I've been, what I believe and what I've been discuss, learned from discussion, is that the consistency is what we need to do in order to avoid any sort of further legal issues. And with this consistency, we're going to have to have the acceptance by the principal, administration, teachers, that they recognize that this is something that's going to have to come before the board. It does take it out of their hands, not as an over, something to take away their power. It's something, this is something to make it consistent to be implemented across this whole system.
Mr. Connor?
And I think one thing we're looking at as a committee is, you know, in this day and age, there's a lot of. and age, there's, there's a lot of fun profanity, and we're not talking about, when I say fun, y'all looking at me real funny, I'm talking about, turn on a rap song, it's profanity. We're not talking about, we're talking about when profanity or vulgar language is used in an assault, in a verbally violent way toward a teacher or staff member. And that's come across, that's been brought to us a couple times, where just the, the, you can tell that it was done in anger, and those are the things that, those are the type of disciplines that we want to get under control, where, because we've seen too many, in just this short time of the year, we've seen too many incidents where that verbal assault has taken place.
Mr. Jaleel?
I was thinking of the difference between this occurring on and off campus. And on campus or on school property, you have eyewitness, you have two or three people from either the administration or peers that can testify to the incident. But off school property, it, it, it may have some more parameters to it. Have you guys discussed the different parameters to what is provable off school property, other than, you know, one person's word versus another? I think it's a different dynamic, for some reason, it just keeps coming to my mind.
If, if there's witnesses, there's witnesses. They're not going to be the ones that are going to be coming to close session to testify. This is going to be an incident where the teacher is trusted, for the most part. If there are witnesses, that can be taken with whatever report. You can have a classroom of kids that say that they didn't hear a thing, when they're probably just not wanting to.
Be involved.
Be involved. So I, I trust our teachers. I don't see, I would not imagine a teacher making up something like that if they were assaulted in a grocery store, movie theater, raking their lawn. I just don't, you know, someone yells out a vulgarity at me, if I'm out in front of my street, it's probably, I always think it's a friend, I wave. But if it's something that a teacher can't identify, a particular student, then I would trust the teacher.
Mr. Andrews, I don't want to miss you, so you have, Ms. Day can tell me when he raises his hand, so you can chime in if you got, just don't want to make sure, want to make sure that.
Yes.
Mr. DePaul, are you making a motion on the floor?
I'm making a motion that we accept the changes to the, this particular policy.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Mr. Connor, Mr. DePaul, a discussion, any further discussion on this policy? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. You know, I was at a school Thanksgiving, and this cafeteria staff was telling me, if you can fix one thing, fix cussing.
Okay.
So thank you for bringing this to the board. Next one is ad hocs, superintendent search committee. Dr. Tinsley, I just wanted, can I make a clarification? The, the board policies allow. House chair to appoint ad hoc committees. So this committee was formed part of the policy, our parliamentary and Dr. Day checkbox on that. I just wanted to make that clarification. Go ahead, Dr. Tinsley.
Okay, on November 25, the ad hoc search committee met to discuss the pros and cons that this committee had, had brought forth during and post the interview process that occurred earlier. We did consider all of those pros and cons for the three companies, Buffkin and Baker, HYA Corporation, and McPherson and Jacobson to be our search firms, that search, those are our search firm candidates. We did consider all the pros and cons, again, levied by this board, and we were charged to make a recommendation, and that recommendation unanimously from the ad hoc search committee is that we accept McPherson and Jacobson as the search committee moving forward.
So that's your proposal or recommendation from the search?
That is our.
Since it's coming from a committee, it doesn't require a second, so you have a motion on the floor. Madam Clerk, do you have the name of the firm written down?
McPherson. McPherson and Jacobson.
Which?
It's the third one, the last one.
So the three, let me, let me read the three again. So the three we, we, that were interviewed, and you all offered pros and cons on them, we considered at the ad hoc meeting on November 25, were Buffkin and Baker.
They were first. This is the order that they?
I'm just reading them.
No, they're not, it's not the order.
No, no particular order. HYA Corporation, and McPherson and Jacobson. We considered all three, we looked at all the pros and cons, we had a lengthy discussion, and our recommendation is McPherson and Jacobson.
Ms. Lowry, you are on that ad hoc search committee. Do you have any, would you like to?
No, I was for another one, because I really want to think outside the box, but a point was made that they have to look for the candidates we are specifically asking certain characteristics of. So it doesn't matter who we're dealing with, they're working for us, and they need to vet people that we want to interview, that meet certain qualifications that we're looking for. So that we want somebody that's going to think a little bit outside the box, somebody that can handle, that can, that knows about school closings and how to consolidate and to do it effectively, someone who knows how to build a relationship with city council, somebody who knows, you know, all these other things that we've been thinking about. So, so we're not getting the same old thing, because I know as teachers, you know, we just get the same old, we're, I was afraid of getting the same old pool out of superintendents and just going back, and we're just back in the same rut, and it's like, no, 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 we need to do something different and out of the box, and really make some changes, and clean up some things and stuff like that. So if we tell them what we're looking for, and then they send us candidates, and then we vet them, and it's not what we're looking for, we can tell them, go back to the drawing board and find us somebody else. So I'm good with them.
And the out of the box here, you know, I don't think any of these firms could be in the box, right? The out of the box thing that we're going to do as a search committee, we're going to be involved in this process, step one to step whatever. We're not going to relinquish, or relinquish control to the search committee, no matter who it is. That was one of the commitments that we made from day one as a search committee. And, you know, again, as you said, the point that was made several times during our November 25 meeting is that this company works for us. We are going to ensure that they have the boundaries and parameters that we are looking for from step one, and that we're going to walk with them through it the entire time. If they go off, off the center line, we're going to pull them back. We're going to hold them accountable throughout.
I'm going to say as an individual school board member, with you two being there, I have full, good faith and trust like a US dollar on that search.
Oh, yeah.
I'm speaking as an individual member. You two being there, so I have full faith and trust that you'll do the right thing, which is right for these kids. That's all it's all about, it's all about kids.
And that's the good thing, the discussion, just serving, you know, the discussion, you know, I mean, there is a focus on the kids, and on the end state of finding the right, not just a, but the right superintendent for this school district. We know the importance of this task, no one is taking it lightly, and we are committed to that.
Other questions for Dr. Tinsley or Ms. Lowry, Mr. Andrews? Attorney Thomas, do you have any legal questions?
You say that, that the ad hoc committee was unanimous in its decision?
Well, yes, and our recommendation is.
Can we call the roll? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
No.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Next one is school board member reports, Gov. School, Mrs. Lowry.
Okay, so our, I've gotten an agenda, but our meeting's not till tomorrow. So for the Gov. School, we will be talking about the cell phone policy approval, funding balance request, the calendar, student selection, school tours, and from the city and counties. So that's what we'll be talking about tomorrow. And then for the Laurel, I've gotten an agenda for that, but our meeting's not till, again, until tomorrow. So we'll be talking over the fiscal accounts, modular units, air quality, and the need for two speech positions.
Thank you. STEM Academy, Mr. Connor?
No updates since the last meeting.
Thank you. Finance and Facilities Chair, DePaul?
Yes, we've been talking a lot in between meetings, meeting with other people that have some good ideas. There's two things that have come up, especially since the conference that we went to. In considering that we're going to be shooting for the rebuilding of Sandusky, one of the things that's coming up, and we're going to be discussing numbers for the finance committee, so, again, in the event that we have to do, instead of, in lieu of closing both schools, we're recommending, we will be, I will be discussing with the finance committee to recommend to the board that we repurpose TC Miller, move the students to anything closer to their homes. Looking at the numbers, Payne, Bass, Darrington, Paramount, even Sheffield have opportunities for reducing actual transportation issues at the same time as moving without obstructing or grossly changing the makeup of our schools at this point. We can go ahead and move that, make that happen, and transition TC Miller, again, recommend to trans, change it into a consolidated alternative education building, where we can consolidate the number of math teachers, English teachers, that are currently at several different spots, maybe even counselors. There's any number of different things we can do at this point that's going to save the district money, and keep the integrity of the education system without overcrowding classrooms. That's number one. Number two, one of the things we, we were, we were realizing in the, at the conference, is that there may be other options for benefits, based on the way in which people are talking, we're, of course, trying to attract us to their services, that we could look at different companies for benefit options. It was a tough decision to say that we have to increase premiums for the teachers, this is, this is tough. There might be something else out there, in, in respect to all the work that you did, Ms. James, and through the consultants, the consultants that we have at this point. If we can find someone that can provide something better, it's going to be worth the look. So eventually, we're going to ask the board for permission to talk and share information with these, with these other vendors that might be able to provide us with benefits that are much more cost, hopefully much more cost-effective for our teachers, and especially retirees.
Thank you. Next one is LACI, Chair Jaleel.
We're going to meet on the 17th, and try to consolidate all of our ideas for what our legislative agenda will look like for 2025, or to advocate for, but otherwise, nothing else.
Next one is academic success, Chair Lowry.
We had a meeting today, and we looked at scores, we looked at the, the pre-K or the vowels, and then IXL ELA, and this is just what we are looking at and seeing where it will go in the future. So we've got it, we've got a basis, and then we're just looking for that progress as we go out. We talked about community and school collaboration for tutoring, and we also talked about a retired teacher treasure box, where, where teachers who want either mentoring or advice from experienced teachers can come in. So there's a few of us that are going to get with teacher groups or people, and then come back together, see what we have for that next time. And also, we looked at the new, I'm going to say it wrong, we looked at the new.
Let's call it accreditation.
Accreditation standards from the state, so, and where we fall, but another county is challenging it, so we're sort of waiting out to see what happens with that.
Thank you. Next one is by Mr. Andrews and Dr. Tinsley.
We have a meeting this Thursday, so no other updates.
Mr. Andrews? You have a breakfast coming up, right, in January?
In January, yeah.
And then I forgot something. Also, I brought up the pamphlet again, because I've been talking with Mr. Kirkwood, so it's, it's, if we have approval, I already gave the board the pamphlet that I would like to get out to our partners, our family-oriented business partners. I'd be happy to be the one to talk with them, and when Scott gets everything together for me, I can email them, and so we can start getting this information out for parents who have, from birth to three years old, or visitors to our city or whatever, maybe their middle school or high school, at Realtors Office, places where we can start getting information out to parents, so they can start working with their small children especially. So they're better prepared when they even come to school. So the better prepared they are, then the, the better our scores will be, because they already know some things, you know, some basics, so.
Thank you.
So if that's okay with the board, then we'll get that going.
Next one is Ed Foundation, Mr. DePaul and Mr. Jaleel.
No updates.
Thank you. Next one is Beacon of Hope, Mr. Andrews and Mrs. Preston.
Okay, as we speak, Beacon of Hope and Virginia Tech and seniors and their families are meeting at the Virginian Hotel tonight for dinner, and to learn more about Virginia Tech, they will receive an on-the-spot admission decision at, at the, at the dinner, and a panel of LCS, Virginia Tech alumni, and Beacon staff will share insights about how to continue to support students during their time at Virginia Tech. In addition to tonight's event, they are also preparing students and families for the December 1 opening of this year's free application for FAFSA, and they will host person and virtual opportunities for students and families to complete this application. And in January, they will host the FAFSA completion night at both Heritage and EC Glass. They are also continuing their career acceleration program, which targets LCS graduates from 2012 and, and beyond, and their parents' guardians to return to school, upskill and/or advance their careers, which is a wonderful opportunity for our past students and for some of our upcoming students. So a lot of work going on.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Since we are on committees, I just had one more item to add. Dr. Tinsley, as now the search firm is identified, would it be possible to work with Mr. DePaul, the Chair of Finance and Facilities, in terms of the dollar requirement, you know, the fee, the travel, and all those things?
Sure.
And I can take a proposal to the city to hopefully get funding, so it's not a add-on to our budget, because our money is very tight this year. Thank you. Next is Superintendent Calm and Dr. Copeland.
Good evening, everyone. Coming off the Thanksgiving break, I greatly appreciate, I know the staff and the administrators out there do, the calendar for this year, the full week off gave everybody an opportunity to recharge their batteries. They came back refreshed and ready for what I call the three-week sprint towards the next holiday, because it really is 15 school days before we close down again. Approaching the, well, we get to the 20th of December, we will be approaching the end of the nine weeks, not completely. We'll come back in January and finish out about a week and a half before we close out the nine weeks. So this is that unfortunate nine weeks that's split by that, that big winter holiday season. As you saw from the students, kind of everything at the schools is in a, in a lull as they transition from fall to winter sports. Please take these opportunities to get out there and catch some basketball games, wrestling matches, swim meets at the downtown Y or the, the Forest Y is where they swim at, and support the teams, and definitely check out the fine arts programs at the high schools. If you haven't seen a, a show on stage, they do a phenomenal job, so I want to put a plug in for them. Those students work really hard, and they work long hours to put together those productions, and it's great when they have a really powerful audience there to cheer them on. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Next is Board Comment, we'll start with Mr. Connor.
Not at this time.
Mr. Jaleel?
Yes, thank you. Happy Thanksgiving to everyone. I would like to bring up a, an idea of more discussion being necessary in the work of deciding what to do with the schools that are up for closure, and have been discussed for closure. If I were to think of other aspects of why one would versus another, and two were put up, let's, if you put TC Miller up against Bass or Sheffield, and I, I had to choose, I would choose close Sheffield. Not that I'm bringing that up as an item, but for instance, the parking is terrible at Sheffield, in my personal opinion. Going down that little place and just having the long lines of cars, and everything congested, and it not being conducive to an easy way in and out, is a big negative, and it's not up for expansion. So I would definitely not choose that one to remain open. Bass is. Bass is similar, except on the inside. I didn't like certain ways of, I could go into elaborate of how you can improve upon the way the building is laid out, but again, I would choose TC Miller's building layout versus the others. And I think there's other aspects to this that we need to discuss, and since we're not discussing it, I can see how things are falling through the hoop. Like, I don't know if this example has come up before about the parking, but I really think that we needed to have time to discuss and hash these things out because there's a lot more that meets the eye than just like, okay, this is the easy way out to fix our numbers problem. So if you go look at that parking, that's a big issue in my book. That's one thing. I would like the board, second issue, to consider prepping ideas if this huge possibility happens about closing the Department of Education, which puts a lot of the responsibility back on the local and state school boards, which means we're going to have to come up with some things about grading. There's so many different things, right? What do we want to see? What do we want, what do we want, what do we want to improve about local control over how students are graded and how they're moved into their vocations or college? How can we improve those things? Because if we are no longer underneath the auspices of a DOE, then I think we have a lot more freedom to make these decisions. So just start thinking about what you'd like to see, and I'd like to discuss that sometime. And finally, a person named Maggie Malcolm wrote a letter, and I think that's a good idea, to allow homeschool students to participate in attending our extracurricular activities at LCS. So let's consider that as a board as well. Thank you.
Dr. Day?
No, I don't have any comments.
Mrs. Preston?
Yeah.
Mr. DePaul?
Since I won't be seeing everybody here before the Christmas and New Year's, I just want to let you know how much I'm, how thankful I am for everyone, Dr. Copeland, that you took the task, everyone here for putting the words together for all the, what I think is good progress. As I recognized during Thanksgiving, I'm over a conference, I'm very thankful for all the work that we put in, the dedication we have for this, and I'll be, I'll be praying about all of us, as well as the less fortunate, who would be so thankful for the little bit that we throw away and that we just take for granted. So I just pray thanks for all of you.
Mrs. Lowry?
I gave everybody something we got from the Vespa Conference that, I didn't give one to the people that were in the conference room with us on this particular, it's a logic model, just something for the board to look at and to think over. The purpose of it is for funded projects and for our budget and saving money that will share with us to determine the health of some projects, having people fill this out, and then in that, we could decide whether we need to cut this, revive it, or that, that program, or replicate it. And the points are, they would just have an introduction, put some inputs, what they had, an assessment of activities, an evaluation of the outputs, analysis of the outcomes, like a health check. This is just something that came from one of the schools, but when we sat as a group of, there was four of us in there, that we thought, this is a really good idea, you know, this would really solve and have us, give us a detailed look at, is this viable? Do we need to keep this? This is not going anywhere, and, but we'd have specifics on paper filled out by the people that want this project or are doing this program, and it'll maybe even get them to think about it. And then it'll help us in our budget if we need to support something and keep adding it or delete it. So it's just something to think about. Also, I want to say, when, I don't know when we'll see the new calendar, but I thought this year's calendar was pretty good, so I don't know when that'll come before us. And also, also, thank you, Dr. Copeland, for stepping in and all that you're doing. Appreciate your hard work.
Happy to be here.
Tinsley, can I go to Mr. Andrews? I missed him. I apologize. Mr. Andrews, I said, hi, I see your chair now, and I said, I missed you. Go ahead.
No comment.
Thank you, sir. I'm Dr. Tinsley.
No comment. Thank you.
Last one, Mike Common. I'd like to thank everybody in Lynchburg City School District, you know. Every morning, nowadays, the temperature is 19 degrees, and our bus drivers are out there early in the morning. They're not in a blanket warming themselves up. And Heritage High School, I can see across the street, the teachers are clocking in at about 5:45, 6 o'clock, including Mr. Preston, he's there, you know, early in the morning. So they are doing a hard job taking care of our kids. So thank you, thank you, thank you very much on behalf of this board. And I wanted to acknowledge somebody who's sitting very quietly, Mr. Hand, for joining the Lynchburg City School families. Would you please stand up and, so people can see on the camera? He quietly sits there. He is be reporting all the mischiefs we do day in, day out, but thank you for joining. He's part of the LCS crew now. So thank you very much. Nice time to go into a closed session, so let me read. The school board chair recommend the school board approve a motion to convene a closed meeting to discuss the following, as permitted by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A1, the discussion of assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salary, discipline, or resignation of specific Lynchburg City School personnel. Is there a motion to go into?
Motion.
Second.
Madam Clark, would you please call the room?
Yes.
Mr. Connor?
Yes.
Mr. Jalil?
Yes.
Mr. Andrews?
Yes.
Dr. Day?
Yes.
Dr. Gupta?
Yes.
Mrs. Preston?
Yes.
Mr. DePaul?
Yes.
Mrs. Lowry?
Yes.
Dr. Tinsley?
Yes.
Closed session, we'll go upstairs to, the Zoom link is set up for Mr. Andrews.